Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Board of Education's Budget Hearing for the Fiscal Year 2014 Budget. The Board of Education at its meeting last week adopted a draft budget for fiscal year 2014. Tonight, the purpose of tonight's meeting is to hold a public hearing to receive any comment that anybody might have on that budget. First, we will hear from our Budget Advocacy and Review Committee, whose charge is to look at the budget and make comments or recommendations to the Board. They're appointed by the Board, and we're pleased to have Mr. South and Mr. Hummel here to provide his comments from the Budget Advocacy and Review Committee.
Mr. President, as Mr. South goes forward, Chris will make a few opening comments, and then what he will do is introduce Mr. Hummel, and Mr. Hummel will then speak on behalf of the Budget Advocacy and Review Committee.
Mr. Hummel gets two introductions.
He does.
Good evening, Mr. President, Mr. Superintendent, members of the Board. It is my distinct pleasure this evening to introduce to you a gentleman who's, I think, well-known to many of you or most of you, Mr. Steve Hummel. Steve is the Chairman of our Budget Advocacy and Review Committee. Steve is also a Senior Vice President for Columbia Bank in downtown Hagerstown. Without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Steve to make his comments regarding the FY 2014 draft budget that the Board adopted last week. And I would also, before I do that, like to mention that another member of our committee, Mr. Dave Hanlon, is also in the audience.
Again, good evening, President Harding, and also Superintendent Wilcox, and also the Board members. And again, as Chris mentioned, many of you know me already. I've been here for quite a number of years, and our committee had the opportunity to meet a couple of occasions, and also, in light of the new electronic era, we, of course, exchanged a lot of email comments back and forth. So we did meet on February the 13th, and again on March the 6th, to review the budget. And before I do begin in detail, I would like to thank all of the Budget Advocacy Committee members for their dedication and time and talents in reviewing the 2014 budget. It can be a very time-consuming process for the committee as well as the staff, and we also want to thank Mr. South for all his help and assistance in this process as well. First of all, it's to be noted that the county is still in extremely unusual economic times. This can be seen clearly by taking a look at the number of students who receive free and reduced-priced meals in our school, right here in Washington County. We have a number of students on free and reduced meals, and that has continued to increase. And currently, that is at approximately 50% at the elementary level and 47% overall. And that's not a number, I think, that we can pat ourselves on the back and be proud of. So, in light of these economic times, it's clear from the Board's draft budget that the Board and the senior leadership team recognize the economic challenges that the Washington County will continue to face over the next few years. We believe that they have sought out and found the most efficient use of available educational dollars. It is clear that the budget was prepared with solid overriding principles to maintain manageable class sizes, avoid any cuts that have direct adverse impact to our classrooms, maintain full employment of all our staff members, and continue to move the school system in a forward direction. Under the revenue side, looking at the budget, you will see that the Board's request to the county, again this year, is maintenance of effort, which translates into a very minimal increase of $674,205. In addition, the county government's mandated contribution to the teacher pension increased by $827,762 for the fiscal year 2014. We commend the superintendent, the elected board, and the staff for being mindful of the hardships that many of our taxpayers are facing in these difficult times. We urge the county commissioners to recognize this commitment to the public interest and to fully fund the local request of $1.5 million. However, to complicate matters, the increase in state aid that our school system will receive for 2014 is $2 million less than the increase that it received for fiscal year 2013. The total fiscal year 2014 budget revenue is $254,488,968, which is slightly over $4 million more than our current fiscal year budget. With reductions to the baseline budget, clearly the increased revenue that I've discussed earlier would not fully fund the incremental needs of the system in the coming year. To rectify that situation, the Board has proffered $3.4 million in cuts and adjustments from the current fiscal year's baseline budget. Much of that $3.4 million reduction came as a result of the elimination of central office positions over the past year. At this point, it's important to note that the Board has cut nearly $15 million from its baseline budget over the past five years, and making further reductions more and more difficult to achieve. Under the expenditure side, we have the needs of the system, have dedicated additional costs, many which have incurred in the current year and will have to be budgeted in fiscal year 2014. Examples include three elementary school teachers that were added last August to address classroom size, two LPNs that were added to satisfy IEP requirements for one-on-one student care, four lobby receptionists to provide front entrance security in our schools where the entrance cannot be seen from the main office, and the cost to lease and provide cafeteria and office space at the Barbara Ingram School. Additionally, the full cost of the nursing program that was not budgeted in the current year now must be included in fiscal year 2014 expenditures. Finally, as part of its current year salary package for teachers, the Board provided a mid-year salary increases, increase. As the increase did not begin till mid-year, only half of the cost of that increase was budgeted in 2013, so the fiscal year 2014 budget contains nearly $900,000 to annualize that cost. Moving to the costs that are new to fiscal year 2014, the Board has added additional contingency classroom teachers, a lead teacher in supplies for the Virtual High School Project, software upgrades to systems that have actually been in place for nearly 30 years, and other ongoing challenges that have been noted are, have been the health insurance premium costs and the teacher pension transfer from the State of Maryland. While the health premium is still under review by the Board's actuaries, the amounts that are currently budgeted at $845,762 and $827,762 respectively, and the pull for salary increases is the final major budget increase in that category. The balance of planned expenditures and increases for 2014 include several minor instructional and transportation costs of over, of under $200,000 each. One of the other points that we'd like to, you know, thank the Board for and comment is that the funding of the summer learning loss. And the committee would also like to note that the superintendent, you know, committed resources, again, to offer summer learning camps for the rising second graders. And research suggests that during the transitional summer break, some children can experience a loss of much, as much of 30% of the previous year's learning. Last year's trial effort demonstrated that by providing a focused and enriched environment during the summer, this effect can be mitigated. Looking at the long-range picture, it's extremely important to note that the fiscal year 2014 funding follows, the request follows the Board's master plan, mission, and vision as required by the statute. However, as a group of diverse stakeholders, the committee feels compelled to remind the public that revenue shortfalls will most likely continue for at least the next several years at both the state and local levels. We fear that incremental increases in the state, in the level, yeah, increases in the level of the state's financial support will likely shrink over the next few years in response to the increased need in other jurisdictions relative to the Washington County. Additionally, the committee is concerned about the volatility of energy costs, where major increases for the school system could have a significant impact on the budget. Sadly, we fear that energy costs will remain unstable and very hard to predict, just as we have in our own, you know, in our own personal budgets. We feel that the 2014 fiscal year is one of many very tight budget years to come. The committee members do believe that as the system faces financial challenges in the coming years, all of its stakeholders will need to work and possibly sacrifice as a team for the good of our students. Some preventive measures, the school system must continue to search for innovative ways to reduce costs just as it's done in the past. In regard, we believe that the system is very serious about escalating energy costs, and the committee is very pleased to see the Board's proactive, long-term stewardship of taxpayer funding, as demonstrated by the use of geothermal heating and cooling in new construction projects. Specific 2014 priorities, much like our elected board, our committee has a very serious concern regarding safety and security in our schools. We commend the superintendent, board, and staff for their diligent review of all options in this very important area. Our detailed review, our detailed review revealed that, as a result of proactive management, staff has developed a plan to fund two additional school resource officers at little or no cost to the budget through the elimination of overtime. Expense controls like this clearly demonstrate that the Board and the staff are constantly focusing on efficiencies that will keep our students and our facilities safe and secure. Maintenance of quality, we know that the public considers Washington County one of the best school systems in this state. Families that have relocated here in the past have done so in part to give their children the opportunity to attend Washington County public schools. The challenge going forward would be to raise that academic bar as we move forward into the next generation of school reform, the common core curriculum, and the possible effects of sequestration with what may be very limited financial resources. The system must optimize the 85% of this budget that represents personnel costs by continuing to attract and retain the brightest and most engaging educators possible to teach our Washington County students. The committee's request is, we understand the dilemma facing the Board of County Commissioners. County wealth per pupil is falling, unemployment is high, resulting in depressed income tax revenues, real estate values have decreased or dropped, resulting in decreased property tax revenues. However, at the same time, demands for improved student outcomes are being thrust upon the local school system, and these demands will eventually require increased funding to produce demonstrated success. As taxpayers and parents, we urge our county commissioners to fully fund the Board of Education's fiscal year 2014 operating budget request. Despite the anemic economy with which the commissioners are struggling, education must continue to be a top priority, as a top-notch educational system is the engine that will eventually drive the economic development for Washington County. Finally, we believe that the Board of Education has always acted responsibly with the funds that have been entrusted to us in the past. Our Board has strived to maintain a low-average class size and provide individualized and differentiated instruction. This year, the Board has decreased costs in the administrative areas by eliminating three central office administrators, five curriculum specialists, two central office clerical position, and one senior project manager in the facilities department. Responsible actions like this funnel budget dollars directly into the classroom, where the proverbial rubber does meet the road. In this, we believe that the Board has acted in the very best interest of every citizen in here in Washington County. The result of this approach has placed our schools among the best in the nation. Therefore, we ask the community, the community to rally with us and encourage the county commissioners to fully fund the Board of Education's reasonable budget request and demonstrate a continued commitment to education. Over the years, Washington County Board of Education has demonstrated with results what can be accomplished. Then, I'll address any questions that someone might have.
Thank you, Mr. Hummel. Are there questions or comments from any of the Board members? Ms. Breitman?
Just sort of an overview, thank you again. I've sort of lost track of how many years you've served. I just want to thank you. It's an immense commitment of time, and I know we all appreciate that. Can you give us an idea of how the committee is working? Do you need some more members? Where are we on that standing committee? And I know you had the two meetings, the March 6th was pretty recent, and I struggle, I think I ask you these same questions every year. I'm trying to figure out what we could do to help the committee in any way that you might suggest.
Well, I would encourage any interested listeners, any interested parties, parties or citizens, to become involved in the committee, because it, after you, you know, it's a process. As you know, you can stand on the outside and look in and think one thing, but then when you actually sit down and, you know, review to see exactly what all is involved, then you see the much bigger picture. And we always could, would welcome any new ideas, input from any, any member in the community, any citizens, any stakeholder. So, we, that's what our group's about, our committee's about.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? I too want to thank you for your service to the school system, and thank all the other members of the committee who give of their time. It's, the budget is a big and complicated document. I think, this is my fifth budget cycle, and every time as I go through it, I think I learn more about really what the budget is about, and there's a lot in it. It's one of the reasons that I sort of enjoy serving on the Finance Committee, because everything we do, at some point, comes through that committee, because everything has a price tag to it.
And it does have a major impact on the future of Washington County.
It does, and we appreciate you and the members of your committee giving of your time and giving of your advice to us, and I hope, I hope you'll all keep it up, and if there's anything we can do to help you better serve us, I hope you and the members of your committee will, feel free to let us know.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So we'll move into the public hearing, public comment portion of the, of the meeting. We have a member who's signed up to speak, Sally Hatch. So the way our policy reads is that individuals be allotted three minutes to speak, if they're speaking on their own behalf. If they're speaking on behalf of a group, they can speak for up to five minutes. Mr. Bailey is our timekeeper, and he will let me know when you are close to the, close to the time limit. We certainly won't cut you off in the middle of a sentence or anything of that sort, but after last week's experience in the U.S. Senate, we try to avoid filibusters in our, in our board, in our, in our boardroom. So, Mrs. Hatch, the floor is yours.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education, Superintendent Wilcox, and staff. My name is Sally Ruth Hatch. I reside at 1201 Jefferson Boulevard, Hagerstown, Maryland, in Washington County. My background is out of professional and public, private, and parochial education. My resume includes work for the Handicapped Children's Elementary Education Program. I was also a teacher at the University of Chicago Lab School. I volunteer at your first primary summer literacy camp, and am tutoring two fourth graders at Fountaindale Elementary School, which is a great program. Here are two concerns. One, these are based on rumors, so I'm just throwing one and two out. Is our BOE becoming too dependent on federal programs when a potential loss of $1.6 million is part of the headline in a recent Herald Mail article? The federal budget crisis is real, almost $17 trillion real. More cuts might be anticipated, and I appreciate the comment by the previous presenters that sequestration is just the tip of the iceberg. Two, is our BOE building mega schools, leaving neighborhood schools abandoned and forcing children to travel in buses for too many minutes of their days into new districts so that attendance guidelines are met for Title I, or other guidelines for federal programs, state programs? I have a suggestion that could cost very little and could save monies. It is to establish a volunteer office. This office would complement your current program that places students in a myriad of volunteer activities. The adjunct of a volunteer office would go inward instead of outward, and identify all the individuals, agencies, civil, civic organizations, churches, and other groups that want to participate in BOE programs. And I'm following with a few of which I've been familiar. I applaud those whom I know and they're helping by tutoring, copying, raising funds, beautifying grounds. The Community Foundation gave a $10,000 grant to the Intergenerational Program of the Washington County Commission on Aging, PTAs, and all the work that they've done historically and presently. Volunteer Washington County under, one of your ex-board members, and It's Many Ventures, Rotarians for their literacy campaign, churches who help fill Jonah's backpacks and provide tutors. But however, this is what is needed, and I don't know if you've done it in the last year, but it's sort of like, you can't give the good housekeeping seal, but you need the Board of Education seal or the superintendent's seal of approval, from the top, down through the staff, to the principals, to the teachers, and say, yes, we do need you, we do want you. But volunteers need training on and off the job. Not everybody can tutor a fourth grader. Some people can't help in gardens. Volunteers need resources and materials appropriate for the task. They need reserved spaces in the schools for some of their choices. It's not good to be tutoring in a room where you have a corner of a back of a room, and there's lots of noise and confusion around you, or to be put in a hall where everybody's walking by to go to lunch. There are places that can be set up and schedules established, so volunteers will feel, hey, I'm here, I'm important, they want me, there's a need. And volunteers need opportunities appropriate for their age and experiences. Speaking is one of them. I'm in my 70s. I can say, my friends and I, we are willing to help bridge the gaps, the financial, the personal, the emotional. We find out a lot about the children that the teachers don't even know, just by being there with them. And they become friends. Some people have, like Kate Coleman, have taken their children all through their school year. They begin when they're young, and they move on with them every year. Currently, I have a fourth grade boy and a fourth grade girl. I'm in my second year of helping them, so just, it's just a thought that may save you money, put it into, give it to Bernadette Wagner, or give it to Sharon, and I'm sure it could fly. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Hatch, and thank you for your volunteerism and what you do in our schools.
If you have any questions?
Our, our policy doesn't allow for questions in a public hearing, but...
Okay, thank you. If you know where to find me.
I'm, I'm not sure that this hearing will go on too long, so there'll be plenty of opportunities for private...
Well, go have some supper and go to the concert.
That's great. Is there anybody else who'd like the opportunity to speak? That's the only, Mrs. Hatch was the only individual who signed up. If there are none, I will just announce that we do have on our agenda the adoption of the 2014 operating budget for next Tuesday. There are still plenty of opportunities for members of the public to send emails, to contact board members, contact the superintendent regarding the, the budget. It's not final until the Board votes on it next week, so there's still opportunities to make changes and provide input, and I think I speak on behalf of the Board when I say that we would welcome any input from anybody who has any thoughts on our budget for next year. Ms. Breitman?
May I interrupt with a question on, on the subject you're, how do, how do we bring forward emails or correspondence or comments like that? I know that we've all received one today that was sent around. I'm not sure I know the answer. How could we get those out, or where they would be available online, or how could we facilitate them being made public?
I mean, I think if, I think if a member of the public has comments on our budget, they're certainly free to contact the newspaper or contact the television or...
And I'm not trying to, I know it's just a spontaneous question, but it just occurred to me today that we have a public hearing, but then we do have other ways of receiving information. I'm just wondering how maybe we might be able to distribute that so the public would hear what the questions are. I don't know. I don't know the answer. I just bring that out for possible...
I'm not sure I have an answer either. I would hesitate to... I would hesitate to, I'm not sure I have an answer.
That's fine. Thank you.
Anybody have any suggestions?
I, I don't really have a suggestion for that, but it just seems to me that if the individuals wanted to share their thoughts with the public, that perhaps they would have chosen on their own a larger venue such as a newspaper so that everybody could hear what they had to say. So, you know, I don't know if they want to be
I just know that not everyone can be here physically
Right.
in this room, and I was trying to think of a way that might facilitate at least being able to share other comments as they're presented to us. That's, that's all.
I'm certainly open to any suggestions, so.
You know, I, I think one of the things that we could do at some point would be to establish some type of portal where people could go and look. The only thing that I, the reason I sat quiet for so long is because, just because somebody says something doesn't necessarily make it right or accurate. And I don't think that it's the school system's position that we would want to put out things that fundamentally were not correct. Now, that's not, but the question then becomes in a public forum, who am I to say is correct or not correct? And I guess I would say, well, you paid me a substantial sum to make those calls every day. So I think we would have to talk internally about the best way to do that going forward. It's not the first time that it's actually come up where somebody has raised a point for the community and perhaps others should hear that the question was asked. And I understand that.
Exactly.
I think oftentimes, though, people don't ask a question, they editorialize, and then there's a question somewhere in it. And, you know, so, so we, I think we would have to talk internally about that a little bit. But certainly, we would invite the board's conversation, either through policy or one of the other committees.
Okay, thank you.
I think I would also want to ensure, not that when somebody sends us an email, there's a expectation of privacy, because certainly it's a public document once an email comes to us. But before, just personally, before I would want to make completely public an email that somebody sent me about a issue that the board was considering, I would want to be sure that there was a mechanism to ensure that they understood that I was going to do that.
I agree with that as well.
So whatever the mechanism would be for that, I think it'd have to be part of that process.
It, it's just a way of trying to figure out a way of including, not that we're excluding, but thinking of a way of helping people help us with this very large budget and have a, some way of building the discussion.
It's just a fun
So maybe technology might be helpful, that's all. Okay.
Are there any comments or?
Just one, very brief one. The, the cost of education, of course, is rapidly increasing, and I don't have a percentage figure on it, but the cost is increasing, the funding from our agencies seems to be decreasing. I was in a board member committee meeting today, curriculum instruction, and reviewed a textbook that is to be adopted by the county. Now, I realize that not every student in the system will be using the textbook on statistics, but the cost of that one single textbook was $105. Now, if you had, you know, 17,000 students who needed that kind of instructional materials, you're talking about over $2 million in cost for a textbook alone. So I, I think that, in my way of thinking, helps us to understand the difficulty in budgeting and meeting the requirements of, and the needs of our youngsters.
And, and Mr. Bailey, if I might just add to that, it was $105 for the print edition. You could get the electronic edition for $120.
Yes.
Because they were going to give you the book anyway.
That doesn't make sense. I'll just, that's my editorial. Yeah.
So
I think the publishers
I told the superintendent, I saw a business textbook, a college business textbook the other day that had a $600 price tag on it. One textbook.
Any other comments from anybody? All right. Well, thank you all, and thank you all for attending. The meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.